On the Academy Board of Supervisors, the order is nine AM. If we could have a little call?
Supervisor Hannigan?
Here.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Williams?
Here.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Here.
And Chair Mashburn?
Here. And if you could all join me, stand and join me in the salute to the flag and a moment of silence after.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to our presentations. Item one.
Microphone?
It's on.
It's on, yeah. I just wasn't talking loud enough.
We couldn't hear you.
Okay, yes ma'am.
I couldn't.
All right.
I have to hear it again.
Right. All right, so that brings us to presentations, and Madam Clerk, item one.
Adopt and present a resolution recognizing November eleventh, 2024, as Veterans' Day, and honoring all Solano County residents who have served and are currently serving in the United States Armed Forces. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So ordered by a vote of five zero?
Catherine, come on up. Originally, Veterans' Day was not known as Veterans' Day, it was known as Armistice Day, and that was to, I guess celebrates is the wrong word, to honor those who had fought in World War I. And it was proclaimed that on November eleventh, 1918, 1918, at 11:00 AM, was the end of World War I. The war to end all wars. We like to think that every war is going to be the end of wars, but that's not what happens. So in June of 1926, Congress officially recognized World War I ending as November eleventh at 11:00 AM, 1918. In May of 1938, the thirteenth, Armistice Day was, became a legal holiday, was then the first day to honor the veterans of World War I. But by 1954, America had already suffered World War II and the Korean War. So on June first, 1954, Congress inserted the word veterans in place of armistice. And in October eighth, 1954, President Eisenhower issued the first Veterans' Day proclamation. And so we have Veterans' Day today. And it's to honor all veterans, veterans who have, sometimes it's confusing, active duty is active duty, veterans are individuals who have served their country and are not to be discharged. Oftentimes, Veterans' Day and Memorial Day get confused also. It's, Memorial's Day is not a Veterans' Day, it's to honor those who have fallen in war. So we have a number of holidays where we honor the military, we honor this country and patriotism itself. So it's good to make sure that we do understand the purpose of each one of those holidays, and today's to honor veterans who have all served and are not to be discharged. And we have an opportunity to honor one of our own, a veteran, a graduate of the Air Force Academy, who's now going to be the Grand Marshal of the Veterans' Day Parade, and it's Catherine. Catherine, do you want to say anything? And I believe it's the first time that a woman's been honored as the Grand Marshal of the parade.
Good morning, Chair Mashburn, members of the board, Supervisor Vasquez. Thank you for including me in today's Veterans' Day recognition. I would also like to thank those who selected me to be the Grand Marshal of the Fairfield Veterans' Day Parade. I'm very humbled and honored to fill that position and represent our local veterans. I hesitated to accept that role because I know there's a lot more veterans that are more worthy than me. But my friends convinced me because of my part of being in the first class with women to graduate from the Air Force Academy. I was a hometown girl, I grew up around here in the local school system, who did good. I, I met the fierce competition to be selected in 1976 when President Ford signed the bill, and I successfully graduated from the Air Force Academy four years later. It wasn't easy. For reference, though, in terms of history, opening the military academies to women was a reflection of the transition to the all-volunteer force in the early seventies. And the larger number of women that were coming into the military, it was important to give women an opportunity to enter the military academies because that's how they could become competitive to join the military's top leaders and general officers. So I'm honored to have been a part of that historic step forward for women, but I want to take this opportunity for the rest of my remarks to talk about what Veterans' Day is really about and what's significant. I say to the brave men and women who have taken up the profession of arms and all the sacrifice that that represents, and I salute you. You are the ones that are out there fighting the battle and, and representing us. You are what this day is about, and I applaud your commitment to serving our country and your willingness to put yourself in harm's way and protect our freedoms. I also want to thank the spouses and the family members who provide the support and share in the sacrifice. Without that support, the military members can't do their job. I say this as a person who has experienced all perspectives of military life, including being a daughter whose father flew military missions to Vietnam, as a wife of an Air Force officer, and also as an officer myself, serving during the Cold War in Berlin, Germany. My ask today is that we not take for granted what our military members do to keep our fam, our, our country safe and preserve our freedoms while we go about the business of our everyday lives. Show your support in any way you can, whether it's attending a parade next week, whether it's posting the flag on your house, whether it's befriending a military member, or whether it's thanking them for their service. In closing, I'm proud to be a veteran, I'm proud to have been one of the 92 women that graduated in 1980 from the Air Force Academy, and I thank you for taking the time to honor our veterans.
Al, see if you can top that, Al.
I cannot, absolutely not. But first, I want to say thank you so much, Catherine, you rock, and it's a pleasure being a fellow veteran with you. To the brave veterans of Solano County, today we stand united in gratitude and respect for your unwavering dedication and sacrifice. Your courage and commitment to protecting our freedoms and values are the bedrock of our nation's strength. From the rolling hills of Fairfield to the vibrant communities across Solano County, we are profoundly thankful for your service. You have, you have faced challenges with resilience and bravery, embodying the true spirit of patriotism. Your contributions, both in times of conflict and peace, have safeguarded our way of life and ensured a brighter future for generations to come. As we honor your legacy, we pledge to support you and your families, recognizing the immense sacrifices you have made. Your stories of valor inspire us, and your sacrifice will never be forgotten. With deepest respect and gratitude, I thank all the veterans of Solano County, and I'm so proud to be one of you. For a little, quick ad hoc, you guys know that I really love being in Solano County. Solano County is by far the best military community in the whole country. You'll see people talk about San Antonio, I've been there, it's definitely not as good as here. So, so I want to tell you guys, thank you to the community for supporting our veterans, and we are grateful to be here. Thank you Chairman Mashburn, and thank you Board of Supervisors for supporting the vets.
Go down and take a picture. Any other veterans?
I want to apologize, I couldn't bring my guys down, I'm so packed upstairs.
George, come on.
Here we go, on three, one, two, three. Thank you.
That brings us to additions or deletions from the agenda. Oh no, we have, I am from the public, I apologize. I only have one card today, so, and I got the mic. So, but I have a feeling that there's some folks over here who want to have some public comment, and so I may let them know, if you want to speak, you just need to fill out one of these cards in the back and bring it up to have an opportunity to speak. And I'm piling cards up right now. Okay. I'm not sure. Probably not. Okay. All right, now that everybody's had a chance to get a card in, Mr. Wright, sir, you are the first one up to speak.
Greetings, Board of Supervisors, Admin, and others in the audience. Last month, I voiced my concerns verbally and in writing about the street vendors taking sales away from our struggling brick-and-mortar businesses, the losses of sales tax revenue to the cities and counties, the traffic safety, there's some traffic hazards going on, especially on Peabody and Huntington, and a vendor on shoulders of road with traffic pulling over, causing traffic to slow, and food safety. The city of Elk Grove is taking action on checking of illegal street vendors now and food trucks, especially on weekends, when they tend to pop up. Checking for three items and proper compliance. Number one is city and county business licenses, which also creates revenues for the county, county health and food safety permits, which also creates revenue, and sales tax permits. Where is our county code enforcement, especially on the weekends, when pop-up tents and outdoor cooking occurs with sit-down dining, no restrooms, no washing sinks, no covered foods, serving gloves, handicap access, and parking, and the disposal of the garbage that they leave? These issues, along with cash sales, no owner permissions to be on the property, including county properties and city properties, traffic hazards and condom, and ants on condiments in some of the concessions. Hopefully, the county can take some action on this and put some of these vendors on notice. Secondly, the jail article in the Daily Republic on October 27th, which some of you probably haven't read or don't read, but there's a pretty big article in there on the sheriff's inadequate response to the custodial division and the lack of response to the Daily Republic. Should have been an eye-opener to the board. Taking the challenge, I challenged them to hire a consultant and prove me wrong on what I said about the custodial division. Time and the way we do business are constantly changing. The board and the county's admin represent our taxpayers and have a fiduciary responsibility to spend our funds wisely. I believe we can do better and transparent about facts and not vague comments or no comments at all when someone addresses them. Thanks again, and everybody, don't forget to vote. Today is the day. Thank you.
All right, before you, before you all go, I have another card here from, hold on, I got to get my old man eyes out. From Bedolla? Yes ma'am, you're next up.
Good morning, fellow board members. I believe he actually kind of took my speech, that's what I was coming here for, but I'll get straight to the point. My name is Dulce Bedoya. I own El Barba's Restaurant and Bar in Vallejo. I'm speaking on behalf of my business, my family's businesses, and many other businesses who are actually standing with me here today. We spoke before you last month and are here to ask for a status update on what's been done to aid in the regulations of the increased unpermitted pop-up vendors. Since our last visit, the number of unpermitted pop-ups have grown in Fairfield and Vacaville, countywide, really. While I fully support local entrepreneurship and vibrant community spaces, the lack of regulations from our county inspectors who come and regulate our businesses should be more concerned on the operations going on after hours. These unpermitted vendors are directly competing with licensed businesses that pay taxes, obtain permits, and adhere to strict health regulations. This creates an uneven playing field, undermining the local economy and the effort of hard-working legitimate businesses. We need you to step in, it's not just Vallejo, this problem is countywide. Earlier this year, we all received letters from the county health department stating our inspections will be strictly enforced. How can you increase enforcement on us and neglect to enforce regulations on those vendors that in fact pose a higher risk to the citizens of the public? We stand in front of you today to ask that you support us and our businesses. Help aid the rest of the cities with this issue. It's been months of back and forth, and this delay is unacceptable. Many businesses may not survive much longer. We are aware of the sweeps by the county on major pop-ups, but the next day, they are back up and running again. We ask that you find resources and direct staff to conduct more continuously effective sweeps. While we understand the need for education and support for these unpermitted vendors, we do not support it at our cost. If you are unable to find the resources to help aid us, then we ask that you refund any permit fees, business license fees, health inspection fees, and any enforcement penalties that have been paid by any of us, businesses that stand before you today, and the many who could unfortunately not attend. All in all, we're asking for fairness. Please take action to support current businesses in this county. I conclude with this, local businesses all over the county are hurting, we're all hurting. Please take action and support our businesses. Thank you for your time.
All right, normally, I wouldn't, we don't comment on a public comment, but I would like to ask if I can have Mr. Beazik come up and speak to you a little bit. He's the head of Resource Management, and those are the folks that do the enforcement piece that you're talking about. And so he's going to share with you kind of what we've been doing.
Thank you.
Morning, James Beazik, Director of Resource Management.
Thank you, sir.
And we share the frustration of the public with regards to this. The county's role is pretty limited to the environmental health permits on these, but what we have been doing is, as you've mentioned, we've gone and done the sweeps. We did a sweep in October eighteenth in Vallejo. We did quite a few takings. We are, with the takings, what we're doing is we're holding them longer just so that we can't turn them over immediately to try and diminish the ability for people to take their equipment and get back on the street to do it. We know that there's a lot more than we can even sweep. And so the issue for the county from the standpoint is that the jurisdictions for these mostly lie within the cities. We reach out to every city before we do a sweep, and we get limited cooperation. Public Works has reached out to Caltrans in the areas where there are on the roads and the sides of roads. Caltrans doesn't respond, and so we're limited as to what we can do as far as assigning violations for people. But when we do find a vendor, we do issue a notice of violation. And the issue that we're really trying to deal with is that when we do these sweeps, it's a, it's a major endeavor for the county because it's not, it's sort of in our mandate to be able to do that. We have to coordinate with Public Works, so we have to take people who work during the week and put them on overtime on the weekend to go and help assist with confiscations. We also have to store these vehicles and equipment on county property for an extended period of time, which takes up space in our corp yards. John?
No, I was going to, a couple of comments after you're done.
Yeah, so we will continue to try and up the sweeps as much as possible. It's a limited resources type of situation, but, so we're trying to go through that process as well. And we continue to reach out to the cities. I know that we are getting a little bit more progress with some of the cities. There's a lot of activism going between the councils. And so we are open and ready to cooperate with all the cities to help assist them with going through and doing these sweeps and dealing with the, actually, the permit side of it from the environmental health side. Trying to think what else I wanted to add to that. Leave it with that right now, take any questions, obviously.
Just a couple of comments, you know, it's interesting that the, we're not getting the cooperation from the cities. As one who was in the restaurant business with my family for over thirty years, my brother still runs his, runs the business itself, but if we put an A phrase and sign it on the sidewalk, somebody came by and cited us for it. And yet, you can put a full, essentially, restaurant on the floor, on the sidewalk, in the street. I see this every day, and yet, nobody stops and says anything to anybody. It's, it's a hazard to the sidewalk itself, it's a hazard to traffic going by. I would suggest that, I don't know when our next four C meeting is, but that should be one of the topics that comes up. How are we going to work together to jointly help the people that are doing everything that's right, doing inspect, getting inspected, paying, collecting sales tax, paying employees? Nothing under the table. How are we going to support them? This has been an issue that's been growing for a long time. We've almost become, and I hate to say this, almost third-world-like. That anybody can put something up on a corner or on the streetway and sell whatever it is they want to sell. There are standards, and we should be helping.
Through the chair, through the chair. So staff would like to try and bring something to the next L U T C?
Yep.
If you're open to that.
Well, we said that at the last meeting.
Yeah, so we'll pull together some information, bring that to the next meeting. The next meeting's scheduled for November nineteenth, so if you'd like to attend that.
We all welcome to come to it.
Then use a Transportation Commission meeting.
It starts at one thirty, it's on, it'll be in the chambers this time, I believe.
Yeah.
So, one thirty on November eighteenth.
Okay.
Eighteenth or nineteenth?
Eighteenth. Oh, no, sorry, nineteenth, yeah, Tuesday. It's the, it's the third Tuesday of the month. We do it on the off-cycle of the board.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I think this is something that's even beyond our county, what I'm hearing out there is these are popping up all over the place. So there may be some legislative things that we can also look at, as well as upgrading our ordinances to the max that we can to try to address this issue. Because we understand the, the problem that it's creating, as well as the inequity that it creates with our business community that's going through legally processes.
We know fast the legislative processes, these people deal with it every day.
Right.
And it's, it's impacting their livelihood.
Yeah.
And the public itself, too.
So know that your county is working through trying to update our ordinance to the maximum that we can, so that when we confiscate equipment and those things, we can keep it as long as possible so that that helps deter, so that we can increase fines and penalties as much as we can with regard to disregard for health ordinances, cooking, and those types of things that are, that are occurring. But we have these very specific framework that we have to work within, and we're doing the best that we can with that. We need partnership from the cities. So just as you're here, just talk to us. I would ask that you go to those cities, and you go, okay, and you go to those council meetings and you make yourself heard.
You do.
And make sure that they're doing some enforcement, and make sure that that is occurring and that they're going out and, and enforcing their city ordinance or enhancing their city ordinance to the point where they can have some true enforcement.
So there is a political mechanism, I mentioned the four Cs. It's the City-County Coordinating Committee that meets quarterly. So what I've asked is that this be placed on that agenda where you have all seven mayors and all five members of the Board of Supervisors in that, in that meeting.
Yeah.
And we'll let you know when that's going to happen and make that a topic. So if we don't coordinate this effort, trying to do it individually would be city by city, but to see where we can come with a unified voice and a unified effort to help you all out.
Thank you, we appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Gwynne, take us home.
Good morning once again. Looks like there's another potential attack on Prop 13 this time, it's the election booth. And I got my fingers crossed that it's not successful. Lately, there's been too many attacks on Prop 13, and it's getting back to the way it was before. And that's wrong, the public should have the strongest control over the money, not government over the people. And I think that if this attack is successful, it's really a sad day for the public. The public knows how to spend their money a lot better than government does, and oftentimes, less government is better government instead of more government, because people can spend their own money better than somebody else can. I don't think there are very many people that would disagree with that either, even if they're not too good with spending their own money. It's, it's still nice to have it in your pocket instead of somebody else's. I really hope that people wake up and decide that it's much better to have things done by groups of people that get together in the public and decide to do stuff instead of paying government to do everything and then hope they get what they want. Because you may sometimes, but oftentimes, you don't, because there's never enough money as far as when somebody else is spending the money. So anything you guys can do to make sure that money is well-spent is much appreciated, because oftentimes, you don't get the kind of results the public wants. Good example is that instead of letting the, the public decide about spending money, sometimes you guys take it on your own to do it, and that's, that's something you need to think twice about. It's not good when the public shows up and says they want something and they, they don't get it, especially when it's something that's very reasonable, and that's often the case. And I guess that's about it for this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. All right, with that, sir, additions and deletions from the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, no changes to the agenda, other than I would note that we do have a closed session scheduled for one thirty, and that would be regarding the public employee appointment, Director of Health and Social Services. If possible, and depending how the meeting goes this morning, we might try to meet a little few minutes early on that, just to go over some initial briefing materials before you actually get into the full close session.
Absolutely, we'll be a little more fluid, and I, and I didn't forget Supervisor Hannigan. Yeah, so I would also like to make a change to the order of the agenda. So I would like to swap out two items. I would like to take item sixteen and move that to item fourteen, and move item fourteen to item sixteen. Just flip-flop them. That's it. All right, I have a motion and a second, everybody vote.
So ordered by a vote of five zero?
All right. Agenda's done, that brings us to our consent calendar. I have no public comment on consent. So is there anything that any board member would like to comment on, have questions on, have polled, or any of those things?
Now I'll move consent.
I have a motion and consent.
So ordered by a vote of five zero?
All right, so with that, Madam Clerk, that brings us to our new item fourteen.
Receive a presentation from M E S Concepts LLC on an inclusive leadership program. Consider approval of the contract with M E S Concepts LLC for up to $136,700 to provide comprehensive inclusive leadership services over an initial six-month period. Consider approval of participation of up to seven Solano Superior Court staff in the program. Consider changing the subcommittee name to Committee for an Inclusive Workforce, and consider delegating authority to the county administrator to execute the contract with M E S Concepts.
Morning, ma'am.
I'm getting there. Those are on.
Yes. Okay, good morning, W. Vaughn, Assistant County Administrator, and with me today is Mary Stets from M E S Concepts. Mary is here to... Mary is here today to present a concept, a leadership training around creating an inclusive culture within the county. So, your social equity committee, hopefully soon to be renamed to Committee for Inclusive Workforce, interviewed two consultants, heard their presentation on doing some work in this area in the county, and selected and is recommending Mary's program to go forward. So, but before Mary starts the presentation, I'd like to ask Supervisor Hannigan and Williams if they want to make any comments now, or wait towards the end.
I'll go ahead and make a quick comment, and possibly my colleague here wants to do the same. Yeah, this is a, we're at a moment that started really in 2020 for our county, when I brought forward as Chair of the Board, the creation of a social equity committee, and the amount of $150,000 to put in to a budget, to go forward with activities that would promote, at the time, diversity, equity, and inclusion. We did go through a leadership training that some of you have attended, and I thought it was very well-done. But we are at a different place, and our place today is, I have a great partner in Supervisor Wanda Williams, and we've been able to look at this committee in a more comprehensive way, and including all of the employees in our county in the process of developing a plan and a culture of inclusion. And I am very excited that we're here today with Mary Stutz. She is going to bring a world of information and support and direction for our county to go forward with an, a policy of inclusion. And so, this is very exciting. I, I think that we'll, I'm hoping that the board can see the value in going forward with Mary Stutz and what she's bringing to us. And so, I look forward to your presentation, Mary, and going forward, certainly with a name change as well. So, Supervisor Williams.
Well, thank you. And again, I am very honored this morning that we have Mary Stutz here before us this morning, representing MES Concepts. As I myself am studying, understanding the importance and significance of inclusion, I understand how important this is, not just for us as the Board of Supervisors, but for the employees that work here in this, in this county. Inclusion is so important, because it helps each person know that they are valued here in this, in this company, in this organization. And so, their value, they can come as their authentic selves, and be a part of the work that's being done in this county, and feel like their, their voice is being valued. So, today, I'm really pleased that we get an opportunity to present this presentation before everyone, so that all of us have an opportunity to see where this can really take us, and how valuable it's going to be for all of us. And so, I'm just glad that you're all here today, listening, and those that are zooming in, thank you for listening as well. And at this time, I turn it back to our chair.
All right, thank you.
Wait a minute, I have a question. Maybe this is to the committee itself. When did the courts become part of this system, this discussion? Because it's, it's...
It's about your county. The courts are separate from your county?
Yeah, so, thank you for that question. I think it's, I think it's a, it's a very good one.
And are the courts going to help pay?
Presiding Judge Alicia Jones and I have had a conversation about this work that we are doing, and they too have embarked on an effort in the court system to promote inclusion. And so, I invited Judge Jones to come to our meetings, to hear from the folks who, including Mary, who were proposing a policy or activity to go forward with, with the county itself. And it was determined that the court system could benefit from being a part of this endeavor. I believe in the staff report, the courts will provide, and Debbie, maybe you can correct me, I think it's seven or nine individuals that would be a part of the initial activity that goes on, that, what'd you say, nine?
Seven.
Seven, seven.
With one person on the advisory council is the recommendation from the committee.
Correct, okay. And so, I mean, it's a, it's a small number of folks compared to all the 3,200 folks that occupy the county, that, and a large portion of them will be a part of this activity. So, that, that's how it came about. I actually think it's a pretty good marriage, if you will, given that there is some work that goes back and forth, obviously. We, that was part of the discussion. We have many attorneys in the county that, that work over at the courthouse, as you all know, and this would be kind of a marrying of the two concepts, or at least the concept of inclusion of both the county and the court system. So, so that's where it comes out. And the courts will not be participating financially. It is a very small amount of cost, given the number, the large number of people that will be involved from the county perspective. So, it's insignificant, frankly.
So, we've had this discussion about committees and the committees that the board tends to create, and without looking at the total impact and costs, not just the cost itself, but the amount of employees that then have to be dedicated to these committees. We did some work, and we eliminated some, not eliminated, we, we did eliminate some, and then we put some in the not active file. So, I, rather than having to act on all that today, I would like to see another presentation as to what that's going to take in order to do something like this. It's a little bit of an expansion upon, and I think the committee's responsibility, myself, that's what I, I think. It's a lot in this presentation. It's a lot to consider, and right now, at the moment, I'm not so sure I want to even be supportive of any of it in the beginning.
Well, Supervisor Vasquez, I think it'd be important to go through, it'll be important to go through, well, you made a statement, so I'm going to respond. I think it's important to go through Ms. Stutz's presentation, and so, then we can all make a decision on how we're going to move forward. So, I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
I, I think we should at least allow ourselves the opportunity to just...
Why didn't you say you're not allowing us?
Look, you said you didn't want to...
At the moment.
Okay, but, okay, we'll just, thank you. Let's just go ahead. Thank you very much with the presentation.
Okay.
All right, good morning, and thank you for having me here. I'm excited to speak to you all about the importance and the significance of creating a culture of inclusion in Solano County for the workforce. So, just by way of introduction, I just want to take a moment to talk about why representation matters, because when we talk about inclusion, we're talking about including everyone in the organization, and so, we're not just talking about any special groups, but everyone, building that culture where everyone who works for an organization feels included, and where you have a representative workforce. That is representative of the community you serve, representative of your customers, and those that, your stakeholders, those that you are actually looking to serve. And whenever you want to have that type of cohesive representation, it is very important that you have created the right culture for everyone to feel included and feel like they have the opportunity to thrive. Now, we know that people most trust people who look like them. That is human nature. That is not unique to anyone. We all feel that way, and that's why building and supporting a workforce that is representative of your customers, your community, all your stakeholders, it's really critical to your ability to achieve your business objectives and your civic priorities as the county. So, the culture of inclusion is all about creating employee experiences that do not vary in quality by your ethnicity, by your gender, by your geographic location, or by your socio-economic status. That is important. So, the goal of an inclusive culture is to create an environment where people feel, here are the five things. You want everyone in your organization to feel valued, to feel celebrated, to feel respected. Last two are really critical, that they have access to the same opportunities as everyone else, and that they are being treated fairly or the same as everyone else. That's what a culture of inclusion is, and it is not a one-time training. It is a culture that you want to create and sustain in your organization. So, that's why you need to make sure that your employees understand, and especially your leaders, the people who manage other people are the ones who really drive that. Leaders cast a long shadow. Whatever people see leaders do, they are going to emulate that. So, it's very important that your leaders are prepared to lead the development and the ongoing sustainability of the culture of inclusion. And we have data that shows that workplaces that embody this culture of inclusion actually have more productive employees, they have improved retention, employees want to stay at a place where they feel included and valued and celebrated and respected. You have higher levels of innovation. People who are happy in their workplaces are always looking at, how can we do this better? How can I do more? How can I help this person? So, your levels of innovation and your customer experience for your clients, your community, the people you serve, they're going to have a better customer experience when they have people delivering that, who feel included. So, that's why creating the culture of inclusion is critical. This is just the framework. And again, everything I'm talking about has been validated with data. This is not just the Mary Stutz version of how to create a culture of inclusion. And so, if you look at slide number three, this is the culture of inclusion framework, where you start with the strategic intent, where you are intentionally creating a culture of inclusion, and you are creating that, causing that to be integrated throughout your entire organization's strategy, how you do business, how you communicate with your employees and others, and then your actual communications, where you're actually letting everyone know how valuable that culture of inclusion is, and you're constantly communicating it, and it's the leaders, and it's trickling down throughout the entire organization consistently, not one and done once a year. We're talking about creating a culture that is sustained. There will be metrics and analytics that are a part of that eventually. It's so important to understand, you don't just jump right to counting numbers and metrics and all of that, but you have to create that organizational readiness, where everyone understands why having a culture of inclusion is so important. And then, the fourth thing, the leadership behaviors. This is about behaviors. It's not about counting numbers. Leadership's model behavior that make those with different backgrounds feel welcomed, heard, and treated equally, everybody. That is the point. And as I said, leaders cast a long shadow. Whatever people see leaders do, they're going to emulate that. So, a big part of this program is helping the leaders understand and giving them a roadmap to how to model inclusive leadership behaviors. That is what is going to drive that culture of inclusion, because they will be able to help sustain that. And then, you're able to attract and retain the folks, and make sure you have that representative workforce, and then the inclusive culture, where again, as I gave you the definition of inclusion, you're creating this culture where everyone feels valued, celebrated, respected, have access to the same opportunities as everyone else, and feel that they're being treated fairly or the same as everyone else. So, these are just some of the strategies. Again, there has to be intention and action. You have to engage the organization at every level. That's why taking the time where I am doing the Listening Tour with a cross-section of the employees, we're talking about a half-hour meeting with a cross-section of employees, not a long, drawn-out, ongoing thing, to get their perspective of what their experience is working for Solano County, because this is not a cookie-cutter program. This is going to be customized to what are the real workplace experiences of people who work in Solano County. And then, we build out the program to address and to build that culture for this organization, and starting with listening to the employees and understanding from them, their perceptions of what it's like is going to be very critical, so that's a part of the program. And then, getting that internal data and assessing the current state of the organization, then we'll be able to measure the progress and improvement based on that baseline. We'll create that roadmap, as I talked about, where the leaders know how to model the desired behaviors, how to maintain the accountability, and how to be the agents of change. And then, the inclusion council will be the advisors and ambassadors. That's a small group, probably fifteen to twenty people, that would be able to participate in the strategic planning, track the progress, and make sure that the charter remains activated. And then, we'll continue to communicate and model that staff modeling inclusive leadership behaviors in order to assure and achieve sustained accountability, and that's the piece. The accountability piece is very huge. So, we would look at setting that intentional culture of inclusion strategy for Solano County entities. We would develop and launch the internal communications flow, so that all the employees know what's going on, and that this is a focus and a priority for us. Then, as I said, assess the real-life employee workplace experience, develop that inclusion, advisory council, establish the ambassadors, conduct inclusive leadership workshops. And I want to be very clear here, I, this is not a training. Harvard Business Review has done all the data. Diversity trainings do not work. First of all, people mad because you're making them take a training. Secondly, it is a check-the-box effort, because no one ever goes back to those employees to see, did you do what you learned? There is no expectation or even care whether it's actually implemented. It's just a check-the-box, we did the training, we're done for the year, we can move on. That is not what this is. That's why we have the inclusive leadership workshops, where we work with those people managers, we take them through, what are the traits? We give them, they have to create an accountability action plan, they have to have an accountability partner, they have to work on, work through each of those inclusive leadership traits, and how to practice modeling those on a regular basis. We check back, we are tracking this. It builds in the accountability process for leaders at all levels that the entire organization will be able to not only track, but cascade down into the organization, so you're not constantly having to pay me to come back and do this. But the goal is that you create the culture of inclusion, and it is sustained within the organization. Once you have developed your leaders and are able to hold them accountable, and they know what's expected of them, and what it looks like to be an inclusive leader. And then, you set your follow-up sessions, and the progress is tracked quarterly with the advisory council. Leaders must lead the way. This is just a quick overview of the inclusive leadership workshop objectives. It is a highly informative, engaging, and dynamic experience for the county supervisors, the managers, the executives. We will do this workshop in groups of fifty. The workshops are about four hours each, and we're not going to have to do them again. This is not an annual, unless you have a lot of turnover, and you have a whole bunch of new people, and maybe you might want to do it, but you shouldn't have to even then, because all 3,200 people are not leaving. So, so your people that are here would be able to keep that going, even as the new hires are brought in. That expectation is there. We're building awareness and literacy around the key inclusion and culturally intelligent leadership concept. It's transformational. We're giving them the behaviors, they're understanding about cultural intelligence, they're understanding about the strategic value of the advisory councils. We would be able to address the specific inclusive leadership behaviors that would address the key pain points that we heard from your people in the Listening Tour. So, again, this is not a generic plan or program. It is very much catered to exactly, and customized exactly to what Solano County and its employees need. We have transformational goals, there are clear accountability partners, and clear next steps to sustain the momentum. This is just the agenda of the inclusive leadership workshop, and we go through all different components of the employees. You know, for example, there are five generations in the workforce right now. The pre-boomers are still working and not retiring at the rate expected, the boomers are not retiring at the rate expected, thank goodness they're not, because we don't have the workforce to replace them, as well as the Gen XYZ. Inclusive leaders, for example, need to understand about managing and leading five generations in the workplace. That's just one example. That's just one example. And we go through all the different types of leadership behavior, opportunities, and workforce representation that we want to make sure is included. And we set those commitments, and then we have the action plan for a sustainable follow-up process. These are just the strategies, one through six, and how we evolve the culture and develop inclusive leadership, inclusive leaders. And you'll see here some of the things we provide to them, the leader coaching, the communications toolkit. These are things that would be created based on what the county needs, and then the county would own and have that, be able to use it. We do this thirty-day challenge with them around behavior interventions to kind of kickstart the behavior change. And then the leaders are going to exchange their experiences across each other. These are some of the follow-up Zoom-type calls that we would do virtually to keep that conversation going and for folks to share their learnings and how they've developed it and what was most significant to them, and how they have been able to share that with their teams. We'll have specific key performance indicators, as well as aligning our internal processes here in the organization. But we start with activating leaders. If you look at the blue boxes or whatever those are, pentagons, hexagons, on the left, but you see, the first one is activate leaders. The next part of the program is around shifting the behaviors and the mindset. And then the third part is aligning the structures and the processes, which is something that would stay in place in the organization and not have to keep being rebuilt.
They're hexagons.
Thank you, hexagons. Thank you.
It's a pentagon, a pentagon is five.
Okay, thank you. And then the, this is a little bit of information and kind of the main points of creating that, in the culture of inclusion, advisory council, so the advisory council that would stay in place. We would create a charter with the agreed-upon priorities, again, based on what we heard from the employees. All of the advisory council members would go through that, the listening tour, but also the inclusive leadership workshop. And then the organization will identify who those advisory council members are, making sure that they are representative of the workforce and the community. The members are going to be able to review the summary of all that I heard from the listening tour. Now, this will be confidential. They won't know who said it, but they certainly will know what has been said and what the employees feel are their experiences working here. And they will be, the advisory council will be a part of setting those accountability commitments and metrics, as well as tracking the action plan for a sustainable follow-up process. And then there will be quarterly meetings, we would expect, and they don't have to be in person, they could be virtual, but quarterly meetings to communicate progress and feedback as you move forward. Yeah, so that's a quick, very quick overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I'm putting my teacher hat on. I'm not sure, I'm listening to you. I have not a clue what you're talking about. And what I mean by that is that I'm not sure who's doing this action plan. I'm not sure who's doing this. I'm trying to figure out where I fit into this. So I wrote down some thoughts when I was reading through, is that if I was going to do anything at all, I would look at spending some of this money and do internship programs, because I think you have to learn by what you see in the workplace, rather than dialogue all the time. That's just my take on it. And we could use some of this money for education, because if you're going to move up the ladder to be, you know, Bill, or Ian, or whatever, a lot of it is also an educational background. And so, to make sure that you're ready for whatever it might be. So, other than those two ideas, I'm not sure what we're going to be doing. I don't have any idea what this is supposed to end up looking like. I don't have any kind of a model to look at. I don't, something along those lines. So it sounds like a lot of words, but I just have not a clue what is the final goal. Because for me, when I'm looking for folks to be in a particular position, we're all out there trying to find folks that might meet the criteria. So in order to have that happen, I think we have to develop those. We have to go in the middle school. We have to go in the high school. We have to go into the college and say, here are some jobs that the county has. If you work with us in an internship program, we will help you get through school and then be able to hire you to work through, and then you go the different gradations. And some of this too, have we worked with the unions at all? Because it sounds like if I'm going to be at a meeting, some of my work's not going to get done. So I'm just trying to figure out how this is all supposed to mesh, and I don't have a visual.
So what you're talking about is the work experience. So you're talking about people who are trained to come in and get hired in a job, building the workforce. What I'm talking about is what happens to those people after they come to work at your organization, so that they actually are productive, they can get the work done, they feel included, they want to stay here, and don't get recruited away by somebody else because they're having a horrible work experience because they don't feel included, they don't have a leader, or a manager, or a supervisor, who really knows how to be an inclusive leader and help people feel that way. Because at the end of the day, you know, hiring a diverse workforce is just the tip of the iceberg. It's what happens to people after they come to work in an organization that makes the difference on whether that organization achieves its goals or not. So we're not talking about the what per se. We're talking about the how, how people work here, how leaders lead, and giving them the tools to make sure they know how to do that, because they don't learn that in school. That is not your degree, your college degree, or whatever, which is why you have so many issues in workplaces with high turnover and with people not feeling like they're being treated fairly, like they're not getting.
So what would be, what would be some folks that you've worked with, other counties or other organizations, that I might be able to talk with folks as to, you came in, gave the presentation, things got started, to see what exactly the end game was and how they felt it was working? I'm just not comfortable yet saying, hey, let's go for it yet, until I have a better understanding of what we think we're going to do. So think of it as baseball. So, you know, we're right now with the pitcher. We haven't made it to first base yet, but eventually to come all the way around to make a home run, what is it that the end game is going to be looking like? So, down the road, and if you had something in your information, I apologize for not seeing it, but I just, some folks of where I could talk to folks that you've worked with, and this was the end product, and how people feel about it, for us, for me to at least vote to say we need to move forward.
Sure. I have done this work with Solano Land Trust. So you could talk to anyone there. We did the full program with them. I created the inclusive leadership workshop when I was the first Global Inclusion Officer at Stanford. So I did this work at Stanford, and I have done it for many organizations. I've done it for UC Davis. I've done it for major corporations, Fortune 500 companies. I've been on this journey for quite some time doing this work, so I'm happy to give you some names if you want to.
Just through Debbie, just to email me some of that to look through. And I was on the Solano Land Trust when this started, but I graciously moved it over to my new colleague, because she worked there. So, but yeah, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And Mary, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate that you honed in on the fact that this isn't about really recruitment. I mean, ultimately, it is if we can create this inclusive culture. It's about creating an inclusive culture where people feel, like you shared, welcomed, valued, supported, given opportunities all across the board to rise to the level that employees want to rise to. I would also give a shout-out to any employee who wants to come and speak right now and public comment about this item, because it really is about you. When we first started the Social Equity Committee in 2020, and actually quite a few years before that, it was very evident in our organization that folks who worked for us at the public-facing positions, social workers, you know, folks who were at those levels, rarely, they matched the demographics, if you will, of our community. And as you, as the organization goes up in the different layers of leadership and supervisoryals and department heads and this, that, and the other, the representation wanes. And the question becomes, why does that happen? Is not everybody given the opportunity to fulfill their dreams or their desire to be in a leadership role? And, you know, do they feel comfortable in being in a position to ask their supervisor, to be mentored, to be considered? What would they need to do? What kind of education would they need to get to make that next step? And I know we have a leadership training that occurs within HR, but it really comes down to, what is the culture in your department? What is happening in your location, whether it's at Beck Avenue, or it's in Vallejo, or it's in Vacaville? Do you feel included in the Solano County family to the point where, you know, you're not looking for another job because you don't feel included? And you're thinking about, how can I rise to a higher level and, you know, be that supervisor or be that department head? I think it's really important that all of our employees feel that they can get to that place. And I don't think, we don't reflect that that is what can happen. And, you know, I think we're getting close in some areas, but I think that we have a lot of work to do. And, you know, I would say to the point of my colleague, Supervisor Vasquez, when you talk about committees and adding committees and deleting committees, I mean, the committees we deleted were public committees, where we had appointed people to. These are internal, this is an internal operation. This is a shift in our culture that brings everybody along on the process. This isn't a you versus them, or, you know, anything like that. It is about bringing everybody along and letting everybody have the same opportunities, which I think is important. Now, if the county wants to create a budget to hire interns, I think that's a wonderful thing to do, and I think the county should do that. Because internships are a great way for us to introduce, what is county work? What do we do at all different levels? That is a value to bringing in new folks into our organization. But are they coming into an organization that is inclusive? Will they feel like they're valued? We have to, we have to make sure that that is the situation that they're coming into, because that's what we want for everybody. All of you out here, everybody that's working for the county, wants to be valued, wants to feel included, wants to be a part of the process, to enjoy their job better, to, you know, want to be a part of the organization for a long period of time. One of the things we do know, when we've gone through this with the pandemic, is we've lost a lot of folks, and it's very expensive to go out and hire, recruit. It's less expensive to retain. It's less expensive to have an environment where people don't feel like they need to go somewhere else to get what it is that they need. And so, I support this going forward. I think one of the things that Mary brings to us, because she wasn't the only person that was interviewed for this position, is that you have that world experience. You've worked with large corporations, you've worked with nonprofits, you've worked with other governments, and I think that is what's really important for us, is that you bring that experience to us. Now, the committee, which on the agenda is to change the name to the Committee for an Inclusive Workforce, would be a part of making sure that this work continues far into the future. And once it's adopted, once it becomes a part of our culture, a lot of that stuff will just become innate, right? It'll just happen, it'll just be. And we don't necessarily have to have all those roles or all those layers. We will be at that place. And I think one of the benefits also, you know, from a financial standpoint, for my colleagues, we have money in the budget. This came with a $150,000 budget, the committee itself. And so, you know, we have money to cover this cost, to cover this effort, to cover this very valuable process that is going to bring every employee in Solano County along. And so, I would hope that we could get some support from our colleagues so we can move forward, because I think this is the direction we need to be going. So thank you.
Supervisor Williams, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair Mashburn. First and foremost, I want to thank Supervisor Brown for asking more questions for a better understanding. And seeing that she's a teacher, I know she can value the work you've done with UC Davis and Stanford University, very high-ranking schools that value the work that you provided and that you offered. But also know that you've worked in all these other Fortune 500 companies as well, to understand the significance. When I agreed to be on this board, on this committee, was because in my heart of hearts, I believe that we all value the employees that work here and that we want a very inclusive, warm, welcoming environment so that our employees can work to their best abilities, that they get to know each other in a more in-depth way, that they can support each other. But when you're not, the environment does not feel inclusive, then you have people drawing back, not offering their all, all their innovation and ideas to the organization. Solano County is growing, we're changing. And I know old business practices, this was never discussed. You did not talk about inclusion and making sure that those that work under you, when you're in a place of leadership, those in the different ranks, that you still value what they bring, what they offer. And to create an inclusive workforce, we're actively creating value, we're celebrating our employees, we're letting them have a psychological safety where they can actually feel like they can talk to us, that they can share their thoughts and ideas. But they're looking at us as leaders to see, how much do you really value me? Enough to invest in me, to make sure that when I come to work, I want to be here, that I feel valued here, and that you'll do what it takes to lead in that way. So I just want to encourage us as leaders, because we set the precedence. What starts here, it rolls down. And I'm going to use, when we say, we care about you, then other leaders, the other managers, will also take on that same thought process and make sure that all of their employees feel valued in those spaces, that they're not overlooked. I know everyone in here wants to feel valued, I know I do. And so for me, it's really working on creating these mechanisms to be put in place, an inclusion, an inclusive climate. You know, it takes away any stereotypes, it promotes fairness in employment practices, inclusion in decision-making, cultural integration of differences. I want everybody to show up in their authentic selves. I want people to know, I can show up to work, and you're going to value who I am, what I'm offering. And then, hey, you may not, we might not all agree that my suggestion is the best suggestion, but at least you heard me. So I'm just, and I'm looking down here to the other three that didn't get the opportunity to sit in on this committee, because we had that opportunity that you guys didn't get to really understand the in-depthness of this. But I really hope that you read this, that you be open-minded and allow to think differently than what you're accustomed to and what we learned in business school and those things. This is a whole new generation. This is a whole new generation. Like Mary said, we have five generations working here. We have multiple generations right here on this board. And starting next year, nothing, because she's, we're going to have a gen, a millennial. So we're going to be very multi-generational on this board. And so, I would like to see this board be the leaders that I believe that you are, and that you would vote to move this forward so we can do the work that needs to be done. Start talking to some of these other employees. You know, I know we tend to deal with the executive directors, but get to know the other employees too. They'll tell you, really, that they want to be included and valued. And when they see us vote to for this, they see that we're setting the precedence, that we value them above all things, because we want our county to be the best county possible, and most importantly, that we value the work that they're providing. Because this county can't work, can't operate or function without the employees that do the work. We get to sit up on the sixth floor and look over out and to our views and give direction, and we get to keep walking. But I'm saying, okay, we're doing that, let's give direction to say, we value you, we're going to do everything we can to make sure you have those opportunities to be the best leader and have the best culture to come to work in. Thank you.
I don't have anybody else with their, their mic queued, so I do have some questions, and I have some comments on some things. The first is that when you take an initial, for me anyway, when I took an initial first review of the item as submitted, even with the slides, the perception I have is that we're adopting a contract for a training, having been through innumerable trainings in the county. And as we said, it's not a training, right? So that gives me pause, because we're not talking about just paying $150,000 for a training. We're talking about a shift in the culture of our organization, which has a greater expense above and beyond the $150,000 that's ongoing and perpetual, and it's forever. And because of the way that it was just explained, the mechanisms that have, the things, mechanisms that have to be put in place, and the amount of staff time that is committed to this cultural change, and I'm not debating whether this is needed or not, right? We are one of the most diverse counties, we should have a diverse workforce, and everybody should feel supported. Get that out of the way right now. But that said, there is going to be a significant commitment of staff time, which is money. Staff time is money, over and above the $150,000 that we have to pay for the contract to make it happen, right? I don't have visibility to that here. I don't know what the impact of addressing this cultural change is to the county financially right now, in staff time, or in actual dollars. The other piece is, for me, as a member of the board who has, as was brought up by Supervisor Vasquez, addressed various committees and boards within the county that were approved and developed by this Board of Supervisors, some which have been tabled, some which continue, some which are, were eliminated. I would like to see this more fleshed out with regard to what authorities we would be giving the folks who, and more guardrails in place for the folks who would be on this advisory council. Because as it was just stated, they would have, what I heard, was that they would have authority over some policy, they would have authority over performance indicators, they would have authority over performance measures that would be put in place. And this isn't an advisory board, they shouldn't have authority over anything, by my reckoning, right? They should be advising this board, we shouldn't be handing off our responsibilities to anybody else, because you just said it's about leadership, it's got to come from us, right? But, but none of that is here, so I don't have that to look at. So right now, based on just what I see and just what I hear, I would have to say that I would want to do what was suggested and bifurcate those two things, and not form that committee until I was sure about how those, how that is formed, what their role is specifically, what is their strategic objective. The majority of the committees that we eliminated, we eliminated because they weren't working towards a strategic objective anymore. They were advisory boards, but they didn't have a mission, they didn't have that specific thing that they were trying to fix. I want to know that this, this council has that, that guidance. So while I think that this is absolutely a needed cultural change, I think that we need to make a commitment at some level within the county, I would like to know what the guardrails are and the parameters for it, and then what the financial commitment is, over and above and beyond just the contract, right, for the county, to make that shift, right? I'm not saying it's not needed, it's absolutely needed, but at a time when we're looking at shortfalls on things within this county with regard to the provision of healthcare services, educational services, we're cutting back on things that we do in, in the community, I want to make sure we're not committing to a, a, a change that is of such significance that it impacts other services within the county as well. Not saying that our employees aren't important, because they provide those services, we need this. I just have to know the impacts.
Just to be clear, the advisory council is, their work is going to be based on the research and the data, they're not just going to be ad hoc, coming up with information, and we're talking about quarterly meetings. But as far as the staff time, I want to make sure you understand, we're talking about one time for the folks who are going to go through that inclusive leadership workshop, that is a one-time thing, that's not, so what you would, most companies were doing diversity trainings every year for their entire workforce, spending massive amounts of money and not getting any results. So we're, this is why the whole concept of the culture of inclusion, getting those leaders that manage people through that leadership workshop, understanding how to model inclusive leadership behaviors, putting that process in place to hold themselves accountable, we'd be working very closely with human resources, because those accountability plans that they themselves will create of what they will focus on are things that they will keep track of on a regular basis, you're not having to bring back additional trainings and, and all of that to be able to, to sustain it. It is, the whole model is designed that you, the organization will be able to, to monitor itself and track itself and by modeling those behaviors.
Understand, but in that, within that organization, then there's a continued commitment of, of hours, of staff time towards that, and there's a continued commitment of, of, while it may not be a formal training where we bring in a trainer, there's a continued, a, a need for training and ongoing monitoring of that process and of that culture within the organization. That leader has to train another leader that's coming up behind them. They have to make sure that the staff understand that policy of inclusion, right? And they have to make sure that the staff are participating in that. The staff have an obligation to learn and to do that. All of those things are, are things that take a certain amount of staff time. You have, and, and the reason I say this is having been a manager here, I have, in my day, 100% of my time. And at 100% of my time, 25% of my time bills out to personnel and personnel issues. Another 15% of my time bills out to budget and budgetary issues and review, and so on and so forth, until I reach my 100%. And in many cases, with many of our managers who work more than their 40 hours a week, they're at 115% of their time. And now we, as a group, are going to want to add more to that, and there's a cost. And so I want to make sure that, that's captured somewhere, and we know what that is, before we say just willy-nilly, yeah, let's do that.
But you should not be adding a cost, because every organization does performance evaluations every year.
We do.
This is how you do them, this is improving how you do them. We're not adding any extra layers. All of this is preparing them to be even more effective when they do their regular performance evaluations. And the inclusive leadership behaviors, modeling them, is about how you show up every day at work. It's not a separate thing that you, you know, you've got to go have this meeting or this thing. That's why they, they should only have to go through the inclusive leadership workshop one time. And they get all the material, they get all the information. I give them a comprehensive menu of ways that they can model inclusive leadership behaviors for every single one of the leadership traits, inclusive leadership traits. And they know which ones they need the most practice on, but they will have these resources that they can go to at any time if they feel that they are not operating effectively or ideally, if they're talking to their staff and they hear from their staff, or when their manager does their 360 evaluation or their performance evaluation every year, and they hear back from their staff or whomever, whatever might be going on with this leader, they now have this to be, they have it, or their manager has it, to go back and say, here, as a part of your performance evaluation, here's an area where you've been able to double down on this or whatever. It's all built in, that's why we talked about the very first part in the framework, is the intentionality of it. Companies that do this have to be very intentional, that they are going to create this culture of inclusion, and it does have to be penetrated throughout the entire organization and how you do things like show up every day, how you lead your people every day, how you do your performance evaluations annually, how you give people feedback. All of those things are, that's the goal, is that it's incorporated into what you do. It's not a new thing. The only new thing you're adding is that they got to do that one initial workshop.
Okay. Now, that, that said, now I'm going to go back to my old manager role, and I'm looking back to HR in the back of the room here. And, and based on what you just said to me, with a 360 review and with the manager understanding what the supervisor's doing and all of those things so that they can understand that, we would have to change our entire process for evaluation, because we don't evaluate like that in this county. And so that is going to cause us a cost. I'm just saying, that's not, that's not, I don't do a three, as, as a supervisor or a manager in an agency, I don't do a 360 review. I monitor that one employee, I review that one employee, I might speak to them. You're not going to hear, and the manager above is definitely not going to hear from the line staff in review for their supervisor, right? They're not going to have input into their supervisor's review. We do not do that. And so, we, what I'm getting at is that theoretically, what you're saying sounds wonderful. Practical application within our county has an expense, and it has a time cost and all of those things to us. So I would just want to, would like to know what that is, right? I don't have a problem with the contract, I have a problem with the cost beyond that and what that might be, and I just want to know. Right? And I think that our staff is capable enough to capture that for us, absolutely. And then also this, the committee, I would like to have the committee piece more fleshed out for me before I was willing to commit to that.
So I just want to interject and add just a couple points of clarification. So you are correct that it's difficult to estimate, like, the learning curve, you know, how long it's going to take individuals to absorb the material, incorporate it into how they do performance reviews. I just want to clarify, our performance reviews are structured because we have, how they are, they have to be agreed upon with our multiple unions, so it's a very defined process about how we do performance reviews. For the four-hour training, without knowing exactly who's going to be in it, it's probably a range of about $150,000 to $170,000 for 1,100 employees to do a four-hour training. So in the scheme of 3,200 employees and all of our other mandated employees, it's, you know, it's a doubling of what's budgeted for the consultant, but it's not an enormous cost. And we do have a number of other mandated trainings that take a lot more time than that. They're just not as visible, because employees can do them online or they do them through HR. So those are the only two points that I can clarify in some of your questions, but I wanted to give you those answers.
And then, and I, and I will let all of you speak, I promise, after this. My last piece is that I do, well, it just makes me go that we would be giving something free to the state, and, and I say that when I'm talking about the courts. It is de minimis, that eight people in, in 1,100 people is not a lot. But it would be nice, I'm just throwing it out there in case the courts are listening, if they could reciprocate at some point in some training with some of our staff on some things, you know, we'd just send eight people, I promise. But it would be nice if they could reciprocate on that. But I, I, I just don't see where eight people would be significant, or we could absorb that. But, but my, and I'm not making this as a motion yet, but I would, if we were going to move forward with this training at least, I would like to bifurcate the formation of the committee until we had more, from the process, until we had more information on that and had a more meat-on-the-bones plan.
So, and I was going to say, we can't even create that, to your point, the advisory council, until after we've gone through and done the listening tour to make sure, is that what you were asking?
Well, no, this, this item, this item says we're creating it right now. And so what I'm saying is...
No, we're not. But we haven't selected the people.
So potential...
Yeah, 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 you guys did say that to him, it was...
I just want to understand the mechanics, and I think it's my turn to speak.
So a potential option would be that we, that the board approves moving forward with the listening tours and the workshop portion. And it was intended that the advisory council be formed after that, because participants, if that council is created, would have to be informed by the steps that come prior to anyway. So it's possible, if you choose, you could approve the first steps of it, and then after that, come back and have a discussion about the advisory council.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sitting here, and I got a lot of people wanting to talk. So Supervisor Vasquez, you are next up on the mic, sir. And I would ask the, everybody, we all be respectful of each other up here. Or I'll just bang on the gavel and I'll be disrespectful, and you guys know I can be very disrespectful. I won't, but we got to be nice to each other.
So you heard me speak earlier about the mechanics of it. I still don't see it in my head, how it works out practicality of it itself. Yes, but to, to the first question, are we not inclusive? Is Solano County not inclusive?
I haven't done the work with the staff yet, so I don't know what the work, what the experience is of the people who work for Solano County. I, I've lived in Solano County since 1985, I raised three children here. So I know it's a very inclusive county, as far as demographics.
Demographics, yes.
But to work for the county, that's why we have to do...
So I, I think, to, to assume that we're not, and that's why we have to do all this, if you want to value it, that's one thing, to find out where we short, where we may have some shortfalls is another. But to start making assumptions that somehow we're not inclusive, I think is unfair to the organization itself. It's unfair to those of us who have been here trying to make it inclusive, trying to do those things. If I asked every person out here their definition of inclusion, you'd get a different answer. So to be able to judge somebody else whether they're being inclusive or not is unfair to everyone. This is a very diverse community with diverse opinions and diversity from their own perspectives. I come from a Hispanic, but I'm third generation, so I'm not, as if I had just crossed the border with that kind of perspective. I don't know, I am still unclear as to what we're trying to fix. If, if you tell me the committee's going to fix whatever it is it's supposed to be wrong, I'm not sure that's going to happen. But I would like to look at, where do we have those shortfalls if we have them? I'm assuming that, that there may be, but if I look across the spectrum of employees, it's a pretty diverse group of employees. I will say some area, I say some areas, it probably doesn't meet the, the numbers that are here in Solano County. I don't see many people of my color working here. I don't see many Asian females working here, those are pretty big, you know, sections of our population. Those are pretty big, you know, sections of our population. But I don't want to get into that. What we're supposed to be doing is be blind to the fact that we hire people based on their ability. Should we make portals for people to come in? Should we have internships, as Supervisor Brown said, to allow people to be in? Should we be investing in the community to find more people, to tell them that they can be, there are opportunities at the county itself? I think those are the things we're trying, we should be trying to do. I'm not going to say that there is, that we're not perfect, but I will say that we're, I think we do a really good job here. So, coming from that premise that somehow there's something wrong, is, to me, is kind of a slap.
Well, it's not the premise that something is wrong, it is coming from the premise of understanding what is the real work experience of your employees.
But if you tell me that you're going to do these kinds of work, you're going to pull that data out, and you're going to say, here are the problems, I'm good with that, I understand that kind of mechanics.
Right.
But to start moving forward with other things?
I have yet to do this, and I've done this work in a lot of corporations, I've done it globally. I just got back from India and Japan, we're doing work in Spain, doing it all around the world, for major corporations, global organizations, as well as nonprofits and academic institutions. I have yet to do a listening tour at any of those organizations, and not find that the experience that the employees shared, of their experience working in an organization, was the same as what the leaders thought it was. Every single time I have done it, the leaders themselves have been shocked at what...
I would not be.
...we were able to hear from the employees about their experience working in their organization.
A lot of years before I became this, I was an employee. I know that role, I know those things that...
But you don't want to leave it that way.
No.
Ideally, you want to address it and create a better culture, now that you know, and you let the employees know that you know. You know, the culture improves a lot, just when the organization announces that they are now going to do this work, and give the employees, a cross-section of employees, an opportunity to participate in a confidential 30-minute listening tour with a third party that's not HR, not their boss, not these folks, so that they can really, truly share what is their real experience. That is a big checkbox for leaders, when I've done it.
I love the fact you said this is about checking boxes.
Yeah.
But the other question is, in a performance review, how do I value, if I think I'm doing everything right to be inclusive? How does the person that's valuing, judging me, going to know that too?
I'm sorry, say it again?
You said in, you know, in a review of your work performance by somebody else, how are they going to be able to value what I've done, if I believe I'm being very inclusive?
Well, that's why it's perceptions. And again, we are asking how everyone feels included, we're not just asking the frontline employees, we're asking the leaders themselves, because everybody reports to somebody. So, we're asking everybody, this is going to be, the listening tour is a cross-section of all the different levels of the organization, and that's where, again, the surprises that you hear, even at the higher levels of the organization, this is not just the frontline, who may not feel valued, celebrated, respected, have access to the same opportunities, or being treated fairly, or the same.
So, I'm going to say that the agenda item got clouded with all that. If it was simply just that part of it, the listening session, and then taking, looking at what we could do after that, would be a more appropriate time to look at some of these other avenues in which to work towards that.
Supervisor Hannigan, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair. Wow, I've heard a lot. And I've got a lot of thoughts about it. I think it isn't right of us to sit at the top of the glass tower and say, we know how our employees feel, and we know how they're being treated, and we know how they're being mentored, and, you know, given opportunities. We can't say that. We're not in it. We're not, you know, we're the leaders at the top, we're not in the work like they are. And I think to make an assumption that there isn't a problem, I think is very short-sighted, because I believe that...
Make an assumption that there wasn't.
It's my turn, sir.
Yeah.
It's my turn. And so, one of the things, if you're going to put guardrails around cost, frankly, I think this is a very inexpensive, high-level opportunity for us to really take a look at our culture, ensuring that every employee feels valued, and if they don't, let's find out why, let's put corrective measures in place, so that as an employer of choice, we can then go out, create internships, you know, shout from the mountaintops that we are an employer of choice, because we have 3,200 or 35, whatever the number is, of employees, saying, you know what, I really like to be, I really like working here, because I like the fact that I have opportunities. I like the fact that my boss values my work. I like the fact that I know the people around me feel included, and, you know, we're working at a much higher level of productivity, because we have a good feeling about what happens at our workplace. Our employees spend a lot of time here, working for the county, working for the citizens of our county, and I think it's important that they do feel that. I think if you're going to ask about, what is the cost of a workshop, you know, I mean, we just heard from Debbie, I appreciate you having a number right away, but let's add in the cost of, what does it cost when we lose employees? What is the cost to hire that individual? What is the cost to the organization of training that individual? How much time does it take, from the time we lose an employee, to the time we fill the position, to the time we have that employee in a place where they're actually 100% productive? That is a much greater cost. In fact, it's about double the cost of the salary statistically, and Mary, you would probably...
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
It's eighteen months of salary to replace an employee who leaves your organization.
Which is far greater of an expense than the $136,000 and some change we're putting forward for this particular contract, to ensure that, you know, we do have an employee, we have a company of culture, where we value culture. So, in my, in my perspective, employee satisfaction increases production, and you get long-term employees, who feel good about being here, who want to do the work of supporting our public. And I, I think that to pick apart a contract over time, which is very minimal, in terms of the cost of the time for this particular contract, versus the cost to replace an employee, at even the first level of employment that you would come into the county at, it is relatively expensive, if you're talking about in 18 months of that salary. And so I think this is actually an investment in our future, and if, and our investment in our, in our employees, and an investment in those who may want to work for us in the future, coming from the community college, or wherever it is that they're working, to find out what it is that counties do, and wow, wouldn't I love to work and, and play and live in the same community that is diverse and inclusive, and as wonderful as Solano County? So, I, I say all that to say, I don't think that it is worth the effort to, to pick apart, really, any of these pieces. I mean, I appreciate that you would hold off, or you would be willing to hold off on this, the committee itself, but I think that that's where we may lose momentum, if we're going to wait for the board to have a conversation very similar to this, in several months down the road. I think we need to stick with momentum, we need to start down this path. And you know what? It may be that we don't have one employee that says, I don't feel valued. And if that's the case, then we're doing a great job, and good for us, and thank you. But I don't think that's going to be the case. I sit up on the sixth floor. I'm not out at Beck Avenue, I'm not out in Vacaville, I'm not in Vallejo. I don't work in these offices where these people are working, our employees are working hard every day to serve our community, and I want to know from them, how is it for you? Because I didn't know, on the sixth floor, we had a problem. But that was the one problem I knew of. And that problem was solved, but we don't know about all that's happening in other places. And wouldn't it be wonderful, as we as a Board of Supervisors, could give a gift to all of our employees, to say, we value you, we want you to feel included in our organization, we want you to feel that you have a place here, long-term, we'll mentor you, we'll take you to where you want to go, because we know that if you feel that way, we are going to get the best we can from you. And the people that you serve are going to get the best of you at the moment you are serving them. That, to me, is what is most important about this initiative going forward. And I'm going to offer the item, because I think we've gone, we've had a lot of conversation here, and I know there are some questions, but I don't feel like the questions exceed the value of this contract, not so much in terms of the cost, but the value of what it means to our employees. What we will say, should we pass this contract today, to our employees, is we value you. We want you to be here. We want you to be a part of who we are, because it is important to us, and it is important to the people that we serve.
Supervisor Williams, you had your...
Thank you. I will second her motion, but I do want to add just some words. And Supervisor Hannigan really did sum it up. It's about valuing our employees. And thank you, Debbie, for being able to let us know the extra cost, because that was a concern, that is, you know, but, again, as Mary Stutz has shared, this is something that should just be incorporated in the work that we're just naturally doing, once the initial workshop has been completed, on the Leadership Workshop. Staff, leaders, I'm hoping these executive directors, I believe you are, having staff meetings with your staff, right? So these are how you incorporate these things, in your basic, everyday staff meetings, your staff developments. I hope you, from time to time, bring them snacks and stuff, and make them feel good. But this is also taking in an additional step, in saying, I really want to value you, I want to actually see you show up as who you are, I want you to feel like you can come to me and tell me ideas and thoughts. I don't, I would like for us to really move forward. And helping value our employees, it's going to be a benefit to Bill Emblem. The staff is under him, he wants the best out of his staff as well. It's inputs and outputs, and when we are putting out that, we want to invest in you, we want to make sure that you know you're valued, then we get more output. It's a benefit for us. I don't want us to be afraid of change, I want us to embrace change as it comes. And we need, we have to show that we value them, and I'm just going to leave it there. I think Ms. Stutz have articulated and answered all the questions and concerns. So I'm going to second the motion.
All right, before we go to a vote, Supervisor Brown.
I can handle the fact that I thought we were dividing the question with the listening tours and the workshop, so that I hear what it is, that any kind of changes before we do an Advisory Council. So, I can only support a motion that deals with listening tours and workshop. If the motion is everything, then I'm not going to support it.
So, so let me do this, let me offer an alternate motion. And my alternate motion would be that we move forward with the contract, but that And the contract incorporates the proposal for the formation of a committee at some point. I mean, that's part of the contract, so you're getting what you want, down at this end of the dials, right? You're getting a contract, as it's written, it moves forward. At some point before the formation of that committee, I would ask that you and staff come back to this board for a proposal and discussion about the formation of the committee, its makeup, its strategic goal, its purpose.
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be my motion.
I'm seconding your motion.
I think that's great, absolutely.
In adjustment to the motion.
Question is, can my peers? Are we good? I would just love to get everybody to make an agreement on it.
You made a substitute motion, I'm going to second your substitute motion.
Okay.
No, you can't second both of them.
I don't know the rules, I don't know the rules, but before we get into it...
Roberts' Rules of Order.
Okay, so, that said...
No, wait a minute, the question is, can the second of one second another?
It doesn't matter. Let it suck, and it is not mine. I don't need that.
Okay, all right.
I've got a lot of records, so I don't need it either.
So, hey, hey, we're nice up here. That said, we have a motion, multiple seconds.
The alternate motion was first.
Can we call for, with the alternate motion, can we call for a vote?
Call for a vote on the alternate.
Yes, on the alternate motion.
It's called a substitute motion.
Substitute motion, yeah.
So ordered by a vote of 5-0.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, wait a minute, there was a card.
Oh, that's right, I got, I apologize, George. We got public comment on this item.
I forgot, I apologize, sir.
I'm sorry, it was, it was 14, but 16, so I got confused.
Good morning, once again. I'm really surprised that nobody wanted to contribute any of their own money to this, if it's such a great program. I think that...
I did, it was yours.
I'm sorry?
We did, we contributed yours.
Yeah, that's, that's unfortunate part.
No, part of it's mine.
Good folk in Georgia.
Anyway, the thing of this is, I think there are tons of people who would love to work for the county. If it wasn't for the county, that employment rate here would be a lot higher. And I think that while employees should not be slave-driven, I don't think that's the situation. I haven't heard anybody complaining about working here that much. And most of people are happy to get the income. The county didn't exist, and the private sector had all the employees, there'd be a lot higher unemployment rate than there is. I think that, obviously, you can always improve on what you got, but I don't think that's one of the major problems the county has. I think the amount of money that gets spent that doesn't end up being the most effective use of the money is a bigger problem. I really hope that we don't have too many of these kind of programs, because I can also see that it could cause more friction amongst employees, which would not be a good thing, too. So, it is one of those things that I hope turns out better than what I expect will happen, and I think the fact that there was some opposition from at least two of you indicates to me that it's not 100% situation. So I really hope that I'm wrong about that, but I don't think I am. Thank you.
On election day, it's good to see that democracy works.
Madam Clerk, I believe that brings us to item 15.
14.
14. No, we just did 14.
Oh, no.
No, they moved 14 to the end.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Conduct a notice public hearing to consider a request to extend the timeline to file the small lot final map for a major subdivision application number S-2101 Wagner, for an additional 10 years, which proposes to divide 27 existing parcels into 322 separate residential parcels, and multiple additional parcels for right-of-way parks and open space.
Morning. James Buzik, Director of Resource Management?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Village Green Community Services uses in stormwater detention areas near the intersection of Green Valley Road and Mason Road, north of the city of Fairfield, within the Middle Green Valley specific plan area, in unincorporated Solano County. Consider adopting a resolution approving the requested time extension. The original project approval was found to be exempt from additional environmental review, as provided in SEQA guidelines, section 15168(c), with no additional SEQA compliance required.
Matt wrote that, so you have to read it.
My apologies. James Buzik, Director of Resource Management, with me is Matthew Walsh, a principal planner, and he's going to do the lion's share of the presentation, I'll turn it over to him.
Good morning, everybody, Matt Walsh with Resource Management, Middle Green Valley, the project that never goes away. I say that tongue-in-cheek, but it's a good thing, because it means the project continues to move forward, so. Why are we here, you may ask? Well, I'll... Well, I'll tell you. Um, approximately two years ago, um, the county and the Board of Supervisors approved subdivision application S-2101, um, which, uh, basically was a significant step in the implementation of the Middle Green Valley specific plan. And that, that subdivision application was approved for an, a two-year time period, which is consistent with state law and the county subdivision ordinance. The applicant is back requesting an additional ten-year timeframe. There's no, no proposed changes other than just the, the timeline. There is a development agreement that the board approved as well, and the, uh, the time extension, um, under state law can be extended up to, uh, the timeline of the development agreement. The applicant is proposing a, a ten-year extension at the moment. In ten years, if they feel that they need additional time, they can come back and ask for additional time in ten years. Just a quick recap of the application itself. The board approved two subdivision maps effectively. One was a large lot subdivision map, which proposed to subdivide the, the land into twenty, twenty-seven large lots. Those large lots were not, are not proposed for development. Um, and then the small lot subdivision map takes four of those large lots and further subsdivide it, subdivides it down into three hundred and twenty-two residential parcels. The large lot map was filed and recorded in December of last year. Uh, the small lot map is really where the rubber hits the road with this application. Um, it has not been, uh, filed yet, and that is why the, why the applicant is requesting additional, uh, uh, time to do it. There's pages of conditions of approval that are linked to that subdivision map, and they just need a lot more time, uh, in order to meet those requirements.
So may I?
Got a question.
Sure, sure.
So, yeah, like you, there's been so many iterations. Let me see if I have the right one. So this person who wants to develop this area needs more time for the twenty-seven large lots because?
Well, it's for the, the twenty-seven large lots have been recorded, so that's been done. They need the time to do the small lot map, which would, which would, uh, subdivide the three hundred and twenty, into three hundred and twenty-two.
Okay.
Like I said, that's really the meat of this application. There's a lot of requirements that need to be met before we're, before we can file and record that map. Infrastructure plans.
Right.
Um, environmental, um, uh, mitigation measures are linked to the EIR that are required to be accomplished. It's, it's a lot.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's kind, I needed the rationale.
Yeah.
Now, haven't we already figured out where the water's going to come? No, we have not even dealt with the water.
That's part of the reason why the extension is, because there's still some, there's still some issues with that.
Okay.
And that's the prime, really the primary reason we can't work without that.
Yeah, no problem, because I'm just thinking ten years, and who knows if all of us will be up here, then another ten years. I'm just, and so it sounds like this could go on for a while? Um, okay.
I mean, obviously developers are motivated to move the project forward.
Right.
And the major hurdles, we've got through many of the major hurdles, but currently where we stand with the water issues, that, that, that's something that, that needs to be solved in order to make that next step.
Okay.
Uh, and it's not uncommon for these types of projects, especially in the size, to take longer than two years to get back to you for the small lot, so it's, it's...
And not a problem, but I have visions of dollar signs going up and up and up, and if we might, we might have to even make it, what's half of twenty-three, let's make it twenty-four. So, yeah, in other words, I mean, I'm, you know, like, we, we might just all be on top of each other and maybe have ADUs as counting it. That's all I'm thinking, is that, is that eventually you're going to get to where there's going to be a lot of people are not going to be able to afford to even move in there, and, and let alone in 2024, let alone in ten years. That's all I'm, that's all I'm going at it.
Yeah.
Okay. Because, you know, we do have arena numbers eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so just a recap of Middle Green Valley. Uh, it's about nineteen hundred acres. It's located along Green Valley Road in the northwest, adjacent to the northwest, west section of the city of Fairfield. Uh, the two tentative maps that the board approved are shown above. The large lot is on the left, and like I said, that has been filed and recorded. It's the small lot map on the right, which is still pending. And you can see where the large lots are further subdivided into three hundred and twenty-two small lots. The timeline, on October fourth of 2022, uh, the board approved, uh, the, the application as 2101. And like I said, the approval for that was twenty-four months. Um, in June of this year, the applicant filed a request to extend the timeline to record those maps. And November fifth, Election Day, we're here before the board with, um, to consider that request.
Sure.
Supervisor Williams, sorry.
To ask for, uh, an additional ten years to, just to finalize the, the maps?
The major considerations, they're still in litigation. The, the city of Fairfield...
Oh.
Uh, the major consideration is the litigation that's ongoing, the, the...
Okay.
Orderly grant sued the city to stop the project, and so we still have, that still has not been resolved. Oh, so, so...
Actually, the applicants are working with the city of Fairfield to address the concerns in the general plan. Parallel track is also the litigation. So one of the big major hurdles is, one of the options that the board had approved as an alter, as an option for the water service has been challenged. Developers are working through and addressing it. So the ten years is, yes, it's a long time, but it's also, and it's a complicated project. It's one of the most sophisticated ones that the county has done in many, many years. And so there's, there's a need for additional time.
And, and there's a significant amount of engineering and other things that goes in when they get to this phase of it. And, you know, because of some of the holdups, you know, it's, it's affected the timing of all those things as well. So, um, it's not just the map, it's a whole bunch of stuff that goes with it. And there's, all you got to do is look at the conditions of approval. There was a lot of things they have to do.
And the uniqueness of the project itself, you could have divided all that up into eight twenties and had homes all over the place, but the landowners got together, said, here, we want, we want that field, they clustered the housing. The public benefits from it, because you can still have agricultural land you can, you can work on, and the owners of the project that live there are going to pay for that, too. You get the development off the hills. It's truly a wonderful project and has won lots of awards for design and, and the concept of it. There are people that don't want anything out there, so they're fighting the one place you can't buy, that's the infrastructure, the water in the sewer, which is why we're now twenty years down the road.
And it is rare that you find a specific plan that has multiple ownerships where everybody's on the same page.
Same page.
Um, in ten years from now, will this still be a design that is award-winning?
Oh, yeah.
Want that change?
Yep.
Uh, its perspective in time, based on, you know, need for housing and...
Sure.
I, I'm just trying to think down the road.
So some of the novel aspects of this project is the amount of area that was put into conservation, right? It's, it's sort of a new model, and a lot of the awards are rewarded based upon that strategy. Um, additionally, it's just, you know, the location of it is going to be very unique, and the opportunity that it presents is going to be...
And there's a conservancy on it, too.
Correct, right. So, so that model was, was kind of somewhat revolutionary, because it, it did create a mechanism to, to develop this in a proper way while also honoring agriculture and keeping the areas, keeping areas available for future agriculture, conservation, and those things, and still, but bring development. It was, it's a very important project.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so just to finish off the slides, and just so you know, the applicant is here and available to answer questions, should the board have questions over. As far as SEQA goes, environmental review, um, the original Middle Green Valley specific plan, um, had an EIR certified as part of its approval. Um, in 2021, when the applicant brought this application forward, it was determined that the application was consistent with that initial EIR, and no further, um, environmental review was needed. And this request is changing nothing. It is just adding time, a timeline, uh, additional time for the applicant to meet their requirements to file the map. So there's no additional SEQA that's necessary with this action today. Um, and staff's recommendation is to conduct a notice public hearing, and I won't read the entire thing, but I will say that our recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the applicant's request for a ten-year time extension.
All right, with that, prior to, uh, us having a discussion up here, I'm going to open the public hearing. I have one card, uh, for a speaker from the public, from Cherry Wagner.
Don't change our mind.
I was hesitant just to withdraw. Thank you, staff, for your clarifications. I really appreciate it. I did just want to share that we have actually made quite a bit of progress in the past two years, and so that's worth noting. Uh, we have a great land conservation partner in the California Range Land Trust. Um, we have secured all of the requisite agency permits, Army Corps, Fish and Wildlife, our friends at NOAA for stream bed crossing, so to the hundred and forty-six conditions, that's some of them, so that, that's good news. And it, it is not novel to need much more time on a large-scale project like this, and it's going to break up into pieces, and there's a lot of developer interest, so they have to come on board as well. So I do, um, appreciate the, your time, and I would just ask for your support today. Thank you.
Just a quick question. There are, there are creeks out there that are going to be restored that would not, never be restored had not been for this project.
I don't know how they would be restored without the project, no.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
I just wanted to, I completely forgot about the lawsuit, because I thought, I, I, so thank you for reminding me, which is why we're here, basically. That's, I, and I know, and I understand why, and I, yeah, okay, okay, just like, dude.
All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing, take it back in the hands of the board.
Staff's recommendation.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second.
There you go.
All right.
So ordered by a five-zero vote?
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
See in ten years? Move back a...
That means you guys can't retire till this is done.
That brings us to the new item sixteen.
Landscaping. Hi, Kathy, how are you?
Great.
Bringing up the PowerPoint, circle a moment. Consider introducing an ordinance to add chapter thirteen point five, water efficient landscapes to the Solano County Code to adopt the state's model water efficient landscape ordinance. California Code of Regulations Title Twenty-three, Division Two, Chapter Two Point Seven, consistent with state law, the proposed ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under SEQA guidelines, sections one five zero six one B three, one five three zero seven, and one five three zero eight.
Oh, you, Alan.
Hello, Chair Ashburn. Supervisors, members of the public, Alan Calder, Planning Manager. We're here today to talk to you about the model efficiency landscape ordinance. This is a, uh, the objective here is to adopt a, the state's model water efficient landscape ordinance in line with California regulations. And I'm joined with, um, to my left here, Kathy Pease. She's with MAS Consultants. She's been doing, um, uh, great work for us as a, uh, outside planner, um, and importantly, has had a role in writing the state model ordinance, which was great, um, to have her on board. And Liz Whitford, to my right, who is, um, uh, an environmental health specialist and has done a very heavy lift on this for us, and she'll be walking us through a, um, uh, presentation. I would also like to recognize, um, Narcissa Untal, um, Principal Planner and Sustainability for, uh, organizing and, uh, sustaining, um, her efforts in this, um, and organizing the staff in this effort, as well as Zerida McNorton, who, uh, had a role here as well. So we're happy to bring this to you today, and, um, with that, I'll turn it over to Liz for a brief presentation.
Good morning. So I'm Elizabeth, and to clarify my position, I do work a split position between environmental health and planning. So my position as a registered environmental health specialist, um, I'm very involved in the SB thirteen eighty-three implementation, and this does touch a piece of it, so that's kind of why someone from environmental health is sitting in front of you today. So an overview of my presentation today, I'll go through the background and reasons for bringing this item forward. I'll go through the minimum state requirements for compliance. I'll go through the application and approval process as proposed, the proposed enforcement steps, and a preliminary plan for community engagement. So the state has provided a model water efficient landscape ordinance, and I'm referring to that as a Wilo, and our objective is to adopt that model in line with state regulations. This ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, under the common sense exemption and as a regulatory action to assure the protection of natural resources and the environment. So beginning in 2015, each jurisdiction was required to adopt a model Wilo provided by the Department of Water Resources, or DWR, or to adopt an equally effective ordinance. And a report is due every January thirty-first to DWR. Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, which is the state's short-lived climate pollution reduction act, also includes a mandate to have implemented the model Wilo ordinance or an equally effective enforcement mechanism, and that mandate has been in place since 2022. So Solano County is currently out of compliance in regards to both of those, for DWR and then also for thirteen eighty-three. But in addition to being able to comply with state mandates, Solano County will see benefits to implementing a Wilo. So having a local ordinance will support water conservation goals. It'll demonstrate, um, a commitment to water conservation, and also clarify the landscaping requirements for residences and businesses as well.
So what makes us out of compliance, and will, uh, adopting this have anything to do with the fact that we should not have grass in front of our yard? Or, I mean, tell me what, what's the, what will be the actual ration, what exactly will happen should I vote yes for this?
Exactly. Um, so I can skip ahead if you'd like me to, but address your first question. The out of compliance piece is not having that enforcement mechanism in place, either the model itself or something that's equally effective.
So who would do the enforcement? If, I mean, if we're out of, if we're out of compliance and, because we don't have the enforcement, what, what does that mean?
Yeah, that would, I would add to that. That would fall into the code enforcement role, uh, our, our code enforcement division. So, um, there are aspects of this with regards to compliance that Liz will address through the process.
Okay, okay.
So, um, there are certain criteria on it.
Yeah, just to that point, though, Supervisor Brown, the state said you have to do this. You have to adopt an ordinance. We have not yet adopted it.
Okay.
That's why we're out of, we, the county, are out of compliance, because we have not adopted either the model ordinance or something effective, or equally effective to implement.
So there was some bill that passed that says we have to do this. I have no idea what it will do to us, but we have...
We're going to talk about that right now.
Okay, okay. Okay. Because I have this trust issue when somebody passes something in Sacramento, especially on September thirtieth. Okay, all right. Okay.
Um, so I'll give an overview of the proposed Wilo for Solano County, and this is based off the state's model. So these are the minimum requirements that are required in order to comply with the state mandate. So this ordinance would apply to new landscapes with a total landscape area of at least five hundred square feet, and also to renovated landscapes of at least twenty-five hundred square feet. And that's straight from the definitions from the Department of Water Resources. And the Wilo would only apply to projects that are already subject to a permit review, to a plan check review, or a design review from a local reviewing agency, for example, a building permit application. The model Wilo provided by the state does have the option for an alternative compliance options. We're going to talk about two different compliance options, full compliance and alternative. If the landscape project is smaller, between five hundred and twenty-five hundred square feet, we have the option to offer an abbreviated pathway, which doesn't require involving landscape professionals, soil reports, site inspections, or other of the more onerous tasks that are required for full compliance. So some key exemptions, and I'm going to read these verbatim, because I think it's important to have the wording. Registered local, state, and federal historic sites are exempt. Ecological restoration projects that do not require a permanent irrigation system are exempt. Mindland reclamation projects that do not require a permanent irrigation system are exempt. And lastly, existing plant collections as part of botanical gardens and arboretums open to the public are exempt from the model Wilo, um, as per the state.
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
So it's only in regards to irrigated landscape?
Yes. So there's a definition for landscape that I can...
I'm just trying to, in my head, look at it, it's a two-and-a-half acre parcel out there that has a home on it. But it doesn't preclude me from having more than five hundred, does it?
You could have, are you asking a more than five hundred square feet of landscape?
Yeah.
If you were to bring forward a plan check review, and it included a landscape piece, either new or renovated, we would look at the minimum thresholds, and we'd say...
But are you going to look at what's out there already? If there's, if it's in addition to a house?
No, it would be either new, or you're renovating that land. So you had a landscape project, and you're renovating it, and it's over twenty-five hundred square feet.
Renovating what?
New land, new landscape renovations.
So if he's, to his question, if he's adding an ADU to a piece of property, right? He's renovating that piece of property. They already had up to 500 square feet of landscaping around the home. Now you're adding another thousand feet of landscaping. How are we going to do that if we're limiting it, right? How, how does that take place? And is there going to be a penalty? Is there going to be a cost?
So the ADU is a great example. That's exempt. It's a ministerial approval. It doesn't require an entitlement through the planning department. So there wouldn't be a requirement for landscaping as part of that. That wouldn't come into play.
Can I, can I?
So before you do, let me, because I want to add to that.
So I put the landscaping in and I don't put an irrigation system?
You're exempt.
I just drag my hose out and water everything because I don't want to go through you all.
If you, if you bring a pla, if you have an existing landscaping irrigation system and you expand it greater than 2,500 square feet, then yes, it would apply. If you stay under that threshold, you don't have to apply.
I'm just looking from the enforcement aspect of it.
Right.
And the plan review. I mean, now we're going to send code enforcement out to make sure that your landscaping, you know, it's not bigger than it is. And we find out, well, half of it's not irrigated, so what are you doing?
Well, we have to report every year on January 31st.
So it's another make-work on the part of the state.
I agree.
So my question would be then is there an exemption for agriculture? Because when I'm on that same piece of prop, because you didn't say that ag was exempt. You said, Elizabeth, exemptions, and ag wasn't one of them. So I want to make sure ag is exempt. Because when I put the big steel building on my property, right, and I put oleander around it, or I do whatever, you know, I, I don't want to get dinged because it's an agricultural building. I got tractors in it.
So I did get clarity from the DWR, their Welo team, and I specifically asked about gardens. And they did, they do make the distinction between what's considered agriculture and what's considered part of landscaping. So that definition of landscaping kind of comes into play. If you'd like to hear that now, I can go through that.
No, I just think.
I just wanted to make sure that it was covered.
It's just how do you implement it and how do you enforce it?
Exactly.
Supervisor Williams.
I, Ashley, if you guys were done, wanted to put forth the motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay, before we do that.
Yes, ma'am.
When do I, why do I have to get permission to put irrigation in my front lawn? If I, I, since when, when, I would never do that. Sorry, come and, come and tag me. But I would never ask for permission because it's, I'm just saying. Okay, that's why I live in the city?
Before you go, before you go, I think what we need to do is be clear about what the triggers are here. I think those triggers, because one of the reasons that we were in a rush to implement this is because we know what county development looks like. And a lot of times, this type of ordinance is hard to apply to what we deal with in the county. So.
And I, I do want to make a clarification. Typically, single-family residential landscaping would only come in if you have a major subdivision that's proposing landscaping. That's when planning would typically review this to make sure it's consistent. So to your point, if you have a single-family home and you hire someone to come in, put irrigation, you don't require a permit, a building permit, and that, so there's no trigger for this under that. So that would be ministerial. It wouldn't require a permit. And I know Liz has a presentation on more specifics on what that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
What if I don't have capacity in my electric box to run the system? Then I got to come and get a permit. No, that's what's going to happen. And then that's going to trigger something else, and here we go. And then I get a phone call.
I just was thinking, hopefully, there's a fire station.
Erin doesn't run into any of this in her district.
No, and due respect to all the work you've done, I know you're trying, you're trying to figure out how to get through this. But in practicality, it's almost impossible to implement underground. But we got to do what the state says, right? I would hope they say, don't put any landscaping. Then you're saving a lot of water. What I don't, what I don't eat and my animals don't eat should be the only thing you plant.
So I do have a motion in a second, but I would like to see some of this presentation to know what we are actually voting on so that we, so that I'm okay with the rules as presented, because I've already got questions about some of the rules.
Well, they can brief you afterwards.
Any further questions on this side? I can go over it one more time, what the exemptions are and what the definition of landscaping is. Any questions?
You're just going to cause us to ask more questions.
Be nice to her.
No, I know.
So next, I'll go through in detail what the review and approval process looks like as proposed. So the full compliance pathway is required for landscape projects that are more than 2,500 square feet. So it's 2,501 square feet and up. So the expected pathway is that the applicant would submit a building permit application and indicate that they plan on putting landscaping in for that project specifically. Building Division already has a method for flagging these landscape projects, part of their internal system. And if size thresholds are met, then the building team will include the planning department in their review process. So planning will contact the applicant, provide information and application documents, as well as assist as necessary in completing those requirements. We have a very lengthy list of resources to be able to give out and go through with them. So an applicant will submit all the required documents. The planning will review based on the guide provided by the state. And once approved, planning will give the green light for landscape project approval. Once that landscape project is complete, as in it's installed, it's planted as designed, then there's a second round of document submission. That's things like a certificate of completion, an irrigation audit report, watering and maintenance schedule, and these are all things that are required as per the state mandates. Additionally, a site inspection, as per the state, is scheduled with planning for an onsite review. So once all the documents have been completed and that site inspection is complete, then planning gives the green light for project completion, and that's that. Any questions here?
Does that require a permit then? I have to, have to get a permit?
Not a separate permit. There would not be a separate.
All inclusive of the permit fee then?
The alternative compliance option, and again, this is for smaller landscape projects between 500, 2,500 square feet. We have the option to adopt it, or we can decide no, if we don't want to. This option looks very similar at the beginning, except that the applicant will complete a significantly abbreviated application. There's no requirement for a landscape professional to be involved. And then planning is prepared to assist homeowners if they need those resources, if they're not wanting to have a professional come in and help. Once the landscape project is complete, then the applicant will submit the remainder of the required documents. Again, this is very abbreviated with less stringent requirements. There is no site inspection required. There is a change to this slide. It includes irrigation audit report. That is not true. That is not required for alternative compliance. So that will be corrected. And then once we have all the required documents in hand, then planning can review, can complete that checkpoint as well. Enforcement and compliance. So built into the model ordinance, landscape professionals and homeowners are required to sign their compliance. And as I've mentioned before, there's already a mechanism in place for us to flag these projects as they come across as plan reviews and design reviews. The software used by resource management already does support Welo reporting requirements to the state. So there's really no additional software. There's a little bit of time that's needed to build that report, but it's something that we've already thought through the process for. And noncompliance will be addressed via code enforcement and the potential for penalties. This proposed ordinance is consistent with the general plans, goals, and policies, and again, it's required by law. Some feedback from the Land Use and Transportation Committee, or OUTC. There were three items specifically they wanted to address. First, there's a question about applicability and exemptions. To clarify, a project is only subject to Welo if it's triggered by a local agency review, for example, like a building permit application, and the applicant indicates that they have landscaping and that total new landscape area is at least 500 square feet. Go through renovated landscape in just a minute. So yes, there's a possibility that some of the smaller projects may be subject to this ordinance. But what's most important is to keep in mind what minimum thresholds are for your landscape project itself. Not the entire lot, but for the landscape project itself. I'm going to go through what landscaping actually is and is not. So landscaping is planting areas, it's turf areas, and it's water features that are included in a landscape design plan, which is part of the required supplemental documents. Landscaping is not open spaces, it's not existing native vegetation, it's not decks, patios, walkways, or other hardscapes that do not need to be irrigated. Those are exempt from the total square footage there. So renovation of existing landscapes. The question was how the ordinance would apply to renovations. And there is a higher threshold for renovated landscapes. So keep in mind, 500 for new projects, 2,500 for landscape that is being renovated. And it has to be associated with a permit review that's already been required by the local agency. The last one was the landscape requirements. There are some questions about that. So if Solano County adopts these minimum standards that are proposed by the model Welo, there are some things that we can encourage and support. There are certain items. If you wanted to add additionally, we could do that, but that's kind of up to where we want to go with the, with the Welo. But specifically, the model from the state calls out discouraging the use of invasive plants. It does not prohibit them. Calls out the use of fire-safe landscaping techniques and plant selection. It calls out complying with local tree ordinances and effective planning for tree irrigation. And lastly, it encourages the use of native plants in landscape areas. So the committee feedback that we received was that staff should be developing clear guidelines and application materials to clarify the types of projects that are subject to the ordinance and to align that language very closely with the model Welo for consistency. And there should have been in the packet two draft applications, one for full compliance, one for alternative compliance. And we can go through those a little bit if you'd like to as well. So what we're proposing is adopting the model ordinance with minimum requirements from the state. And we have developed already clear and concise application materials that include resources and very in-depth guidelines. And we have a dedicated team to handle any questions. Lastly, for community engagement, even though the state mandate has been around since 2015, the majority of our neighboring jurisdictions already have this in place. But we still anticipate that the requirements might be a surprise for some of the applicants. So at a very minimum, we will have all of our materials online on the Solano County website and then distributed to agencies that are directly related to water conservation and construction. So our office is preparing to engage with some of these local organizations and present Welo information to landscapers, construction managers, for example. And we're in that process now, connecting with groups.
Before she goes on, I would add on, I would like to add on to this is that, so if someone's going to come in and they're going to bring forward a landscape plan, the best practices in the industry are probably going to meet the requirements of this ordinance. So from a burden to the public, if they were planning on doing this anyway, they're probably going to be in compliance. It's just going to be a check-the-box exercise for us. It's an extra step, but it's something that, you know, keep us in compliance and is already sort of a best practice. I just wanted to add that just for clarity, because I know there's a lot of questions of overburdening the public. Who's going to have to spend an extra amount of money for a landscape architect or someone else to do a plan? And additional requirements to tell them what they're going to have to do. Most times, you know, best practices would meet, you know, compliance with what we're looking for. So I just wanted to add that before we move on.
I wanted to add as well that the county does not have a landscape ordinance. So projects aren't required to install landscaping at this point. So even though this has been on the books since 2015, we haven't had a lot of projects. They'd have to be very large projects that came forward that would have triggered this. So up till this point, we haven't had a lot. And again, because we don't have a landscape ordinance, it's not a requirement.
I know at the Land Use and Transportation Committee, we talked about maybe a guideline of the kinds of plants that are drought tolerant. And then working with the water agency, because they do a lot of work with that. And Resource Conservation District does a lot of work on, on trying to get people to plant more things that are more native and use less water.
Exactly.
And if it's native, it doesn't count, does it?
If it is natural vegetation, that is not considered landscape. No. But if it is disturbed land, it would be considered landscaping.
Although I'm going to put native grasses back in.
In that case, it would be considered landscape for the situation you're thinking of, if it is new landscaping over 500 square feet.
That sounds counterintuitive.
So if you're not disturbing the land, that is natural.
And if it's not irrigated?
Exactly.
Yeah.
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 That's a big piece in it.
I was told to turn my mic on.
For environmental review. Again, this proposal is exempt from CEQA as an action by the county as a regulatory agency taken to assure the maintenance, restoration, enhancement, and protection of natural resources and the environment. It's also exempt under the general rule because it does not have the potential for causing significant effect on the environment. And recommendation is to read the proposed ordinance by title only and waive further readings by majority vote to determine that the proposed ordinance is exempt from CEQA and to introduce this ordinance as Chapter 13.5 Water-Efficient Landscapes to the Solano County Code and adopting the state's model Welo.
That's your motion, right? All right. And that was your second, right?
Correct.
All right. Motion and second.
So ordered by a vote of five-zero?
Thank you. One more thanks now. You did a great job.
All right, we have no continued items from the public. Which brings us to our close for this portion of the session. We have a closed session, which is a public employee appointment at 1:30. So I will adjourn us to that, 1:30.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I would, I would just recommend, because you're not going to be entertaining any comments on that, I would just suggest that the clerk go ahead and read it now. And then you can adjourn to that closed session with this part of the meeting already concluded.
All right, good. And then we can also make our board comments.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, go ahead and read it out. No, read it out. We'll close out with our comment.
Public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, title Director of Health and Social Services.
Okay. Now, before I adjourn, any comments, ma'am? Supervisor Williams, ma'am?
Yes, I'm sorry, for a moment, I thought we were adjourning here, so I closed. All right, I actually.
Would like to close in the German, Ashley for two. I didn't send that to you yet, Alicia. So I'll be adjourning, wait. Let me get my stuff up here. First person is Ashley in loving memory, Webster D. Rosario Jr. He's actually, we had Mother Tate here, a centenarian from Sisum, an original Rosie derivative. Her son actually passed away. He resided in Sisum City. And I was just going to read some of this. "It is with a heavy heart that we announced the passing, passing of Webster D. Rosario Jr., a beloved son, husband, father, brother, and friend who left us, left us at the age of 67. Born on December 8, 1956, in San Francisco, California, to Elizabeth Tate and the late Webster D. Rosario Sr." Webster graduated from Lowell High School and furthered his education at City College of San Francisco and Skyline Community College in San Bruno, California. He accepted Christ at an early age. Okay, wait a minute. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Affectionately, he was known as Big Webb or Junie to friends. Webster was an active participant in the Bay Area Corvette and motorcycle communities. Webster also enjoyed monthly Zoom meetings with his childhood friends and loved looking forward to the annual Lakeview picnic. His good spirit and humor was contagious and had a unique ability to light up a room with his infectious laughter and storytelling. Family meant everything to him. He was also ready to lend a helping hand to others and to offer a shoulder to lean on. He took immense joy in watching his daughters grow up, celebrating their achievements, and cherishing the moments spent together. Webster's daughters will always remember Friday dinners, playing basketball at OMI Gym, poorly playing tennis at Allenwood Park, and hours-long calls about nothing in particular. He, he instilled in them the values of kindness, hard work, and the importance of caring for one another. He is preceded in death by his loving wife, Latanya. He is survived by his three daughters, Kristen, Aisha, and Alex, and his grandchildren, his sister, Rella, his mother, Elizabeth Tate, and many, many more. Webster's legacy of love and laughter will continue to resonate in the hearts of all who knew him. He made a profound impact on his family and friends, and he will be deeply missed. And I had honor of meeting him several times, actually, when I hosted Sisum City's first African-American, African-American, no, excuse me, Black History Month celebration. He helped his mother prepare for that. He attended my swearing-in ceremony, and he was really a staunch supporter. So always thank. So always thankful for him. He was funny, he was kind, and he will be definitely missed by all. And then, one of my beloved Wednesday Club sisters, Julie Lockwood-Busher, a beloved educator, devoted mother, and adventurous spirit, passed away peacefully on October 7th at the age of 79. Born on November 26, 1944, in Santa Monica, California, Julie's passion for education and her unwavering commitment to her students and community defined her remarkable 35-year career. She served in Vacaville. She was the principal at Orchard Elementary School, I don't know if any of you went there, and Alamo Elementary School. Under her leadership, both schools earned California Distinguished School status, a testament of her dedication and vision. She was extremely active in our Wednesday Club, very kind, wonderful woman. Julie's commitment to education was matched only by her love for travel. She explored all seven continents with a special fondness for Antarctica, where she dreamed of returning. Her founding, her greatest joy, and she cherished every moment spent with them. Julie Lockwood-Busher leaves behind a legacy of love, inspiration, and a commitment to education that will continue to impact lives for generations to come. She will be deeply missed by her family, friends, and all who had the privilege of knowing her. Thank you.
My pleasure.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of David Fisher, who passed away on October 15th, 2024. He spent his early years in Delmar, California. He lived in Italy, studied at BYU, traveled to many countries with a musical performance group. He came to Vallejo to live in 2001, enjoyed walking on the waterfront, and involved in many city development projects. David's known for his laugh, sense of humor, caring. Professionally, he was a realtor, but he loved singing, dancing, cooking, the arts, gardening, and other beautiful things. A celebration of life will be held at 11:00 a.m. Saturday, November 23rd at Fernwood Chapel, 301 Tennessee Valley Road, Mill Valley, California. And you can get in touch with my office if you need some more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Very much. All right. Well, then I will recess this meeting, but I would like to remind everybody to take this opportunity today to get out and vote. And I would also ask that when we are doing that, if we can be a little kind to each other. This is a time when we need to share a little kindness, right?
Be kind to our workers that are there.
Absolutely. Well, and our workers and to each other. So with that, sir, you look like you've got something you've got to say.
Just real quick, on the closed session, we may or may not be reporting out on that, depending on how things go. If we do, we'll figure out a way to communicate that widely so the folks are aware. And I would ask that if we can adjourn it, reconvene at 1:10, so we can kind of do some initial briefing before the closed session starts.
Absolutely, sir. We'll eat fast. All right. Well, we will meet back on the sixth floor before reconvening down here for closed session. We're convening upstairs. Oh, okay, well, we're going upstairs for closed session. All right. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, not here. All right. All right, back in session for all y'all. And we got nothing to report out. So closed session is done and nothing to report out. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Bye now.